Good evening, everybody. The Newton Planning Board would like to hold a public meeting on Tuesday, on February 22nd, 2024, beginning at 7:02 PM at the Newton Town Hall. First, I would like to salute the flag.
Pledgeance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are we good with our mics now? Andy? It's very loud. Maybe that's better, at least for me. Do we want to reorganize the agenda?
That's up to you. I would just ask that you confirm that Pierce, who's on with DES, is also able to stay in touch later.
Did you hear that, Pierce?
I can't hear you, but I think you're talking about reorganizing the meeting, the agenda?
Yes, do you have to jump? How long is your presentation, Dave?
I probably need forty-five minutes. If Pierce is within that for about ten to fifteen minutes, so if it's not going to take long, if it's all right with Pierce, I'm okay with waiting, but it's really his availability.
I don't want to keep you.
I'm fine. Whichever works for the board.
You want to hang for a few minutes? I'm trying to get something, a member of the audience, in and out quickly, so I appreciate it.
You can hang, dear.
Okay. So, first thing on the agenda tonight's board business, 125 development corpus in the audience. Assuming you guys didn't come here for fun, so you submitted. Sorry. I guess you're here, the audience, you've provided updated MYLARS and drawings with no actual formal application, correct? So, I'm sorry if you're not up there. Apparently, we're having trouble with our mics, but I don't care.
Yes, could you do a very good job of each? We submitted MYLARS as per the conditions of approval, so we saw that we were on the agenda tonight, so thought we'd show up in case there were any questions regarding that application.
Okay. Jim, you?
I was not specifically intended to speak on the application. I have received the updated information. I have not had a full chance to review it. I do acknowledge that I could have submitted. I do think there are some changes that I need to review. I think your town engineer needs to review to ensure compliance with what was approved and the other conditions of approval before a final approval could be granted.
Okay, so.
But I do think that a formal request would be useful, just for clarity as to what you were applying for. If it's just for review to confirm the final MYLARS, understanding that, that's fine, but the action for the planning boards on your tape needs to be clarified.
I miss that. We're a little confused, though, because we have conditions of approval, though. I believe we met by submitting MYLARS.
Again, I will preface, I have not prepared to fully speak to your applications this evening, but there are conditions of approval. One of them certainly was to provide MYLARS. I have not finished reviewing confirming what was at least digitally submitted, matches all the conditions of approval. I also think the town engineer needs to review that. Until that point, I can't give you a yes, they're good to go, or they're not, but I do.
No, understood. We just, we saw that we were on the agenda, and we had submitted the final plans for signature by the board. So, our intent was not to submit another application, but to be here in case the board had specific questions regarding the final plans that we submitted that we could answer.
At this point, I don't have specific questions or.
Does anybody on the board have any questions? I guess I have, I have one question. We have, the Newton Planning Board approved the project, this phase of the project, back in 2023. Since then, there has been some changes to the drawings. I asked for some clarification of what those changes were. There was some feedback provided, or something, I think it was last week. Generally, it was related to the changes to the roadway profile. I think there's additional changes that were made.
Well, we did address, per the approval, we addressed AOT comments to obtain a permit through AOT, which they may have requested changed that were subsequent to the board's approval. We also addressed DOT comments, which were part of the conditions of approval, and those may have modified, been subs, they would have been subsequent to the board's approval.
So, I guess I'm confused by that statement. The conditions weren't to change the drawings to meet all applicable approvals or permits necessary, they were to obtain them. So, if there's changes to the drawings that superseded the town's approval, we need clarification of what those were. So, if the stormwater design changed and the town has not had the opportunity, the state does not supersede the town.
I'm not going to argue this.
So.
Not saying that.
Not saying that, I don't think I need a microphone. Not saying that we wouldn't approve the changes. I think we just need to know what those changes are.
I'll just tell you what typically I see. My experience working in the state is, we provided a design that we think can pass AOT. You have to have the, you know, the cart and horse thing. Where do you go first? So, we obtained town approval with the intent that it would pass AOT approval as well. AOT is typically stricter than towns are, so when we submitted to them and they asked for us to change something, we typically change it with the understanding, and I think your town engineer would mimic my response, is that if it's a requirement that AOT makes, it's typically going to be sufficient for the town. So, you have to put the, you know, you have to have somebody go first. So, the town gets approval first, we go to AOT, we get their approval. If they ask for additional information, we normally provide it without going back to the town and saying, hey, we know you provide, you asked for a stormwater that is X, it's going to be Y, and maybe that's a little bit bigger, maybe that's a slightly different stormwater design, but it's typically going to meet the town requirements. And I haven't run into where the town said, you know what, AOT, you approved it, but the town's not going to. Maybe this is different, but that's typically what happens.
But right now, the town is sitting in limbo, because we approved four buildings for you guys on that property. The MYLA that you're presenting to us has two buildings on it. That's a significant change, right, that the DOT approved?
No.
So, I just want to clarify, because MYLARS they submitted.
Yeah.
Contained four buildings.
Yeah.
The DOT permit they have approval is only an approval for two of those buildings.
Well, that's what I mean, I'm sorry, I misspoke. So, there is the conundrum that we're talking about. DOT approved for the two buildings, right? The site to have it for two buildings, we approved for four. So, that would put it out of the DOT's jurisdiction if you put two more buildings on there. There lies the situation that we're in, why you would have to come back to us so that the plans only show the two buildings and not the four.
So, the situation you're discussing is a little bit different than you're portraying. We have a site plan approval through the town for four buildings. We submitted for the state, the DOT, for four buildings as well. The state came back, and we discussed the required improvements with the state over many months, and the state's take on it was, our traffic report currently says that we could construct two of the existing buildings with no additional improvements to Route 108. So, they gave us a DOT permit to do that. But, in order to construct anything over those two buildings, we have to make improvements to Route 108. Now, the applicant understands that, DOT understands that. If, but, because we don't know specifically what the traffic count is going to be when we build those two buildings, DOT has granted the applicant the ability to build those two buildings and then measure the traffic coming out of those two buildings, because that may change the mitigation that's required on 108.
And have we received any of this information?
You've received all of it.
This has been received, we've received copies of the AOT permit, the DOT permit that was issued. There is this discrepancy outside between the two and the four, and we can certainly discuss that, but I do want to caution the board, you are cited on the agenda, and I understand why folks showed up. I do. There is no application, there is no discussion about whether they had met the conditions, not met the conditions, they've supplied MYLARS that they would like you to sign. I have not finished going through to ensure that all of those conditions have met. You are still waiting through your town engineer. There may be other discussion that needs to happen if we feel that there are conditions that have not been met, possibly this driveway condition. That shouldn't be taking place without a notice on the agenda about what is happening. If a, if the conditions aren't met, they may need a compliance hearing to ensure that the conditions have been met and any discussion about that specific criteria. They do not have a formal application open for public hearing and discussion and changes at this meeting.
So, then basically, you're suggesting we should carry this forward?
I'm suggesting that they be placed on the next agenda, and then by that time, I should have had the time to review what they've submitted. I can't speak for Mike McNally, but I would hope that he would have the ability to provide comment by then, and any other things that you have been going for.
So, Jim, make sure you.
But tonight, I am not prepared to give a yes, no, maybe.
So, we would like Jim to reach out to Mr. McNally to see if he can get us that information.
I believe that's already happened, but yes, effectively.
If we don't already have it. And I think we have one other issue that needs to be resolved for tonight, though, and that is that the funds that need to be drawn on for the projects, Jim, are we, are they low on the resources?
They're in arrears.
Those need to be addressed. So, if we could get those addressed before the next meeting.
I think yes.
Yeah. Thank you. So, we'll make a motion to carry the 125 development.
I actually don't think you even need a motion.
No.
I don't think you should have a motion. I think that you should be placed on the next agenda, because I suspect you'd like an answer sooner than later. I will reiterate, it would be extremely, I think, timely and helpful for me, for the board, for Mike McNally, if a summary of the changes between what was approved back in, I think, March 2023 to now, or what, yeah, sorry, we just submitted, a summary, what does change per AOT, per DOT, I think that will help speed up the entire process.
Sure.
It's not a requirement, and I think it will dramatically increase the process.
Definitely make my fees, yeah.
Understood. So, we don't need to submit an application of any sort, right?
Given where you are at this point, no. I think if there are, I'll say disagreements as to whether you have complied with the conditions of approval or not, at that point, there may be a need, because there may need to be a compliance hearing on that specific condition or et cetera, if that happens.
Understood.
But beyond that, I don't think a formal application is needed at this point.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jim, when is the next meeting, the next open meeting?
That's.
What's the date?
The 12th.
November 12th is the next meeting. You have other cases on that?
Yeah, you have.
Okay. Next is, can we turn these down a little bit more? By chance, the microphones? Is the aquifer protection ordinance amendments presentation by Jennifer Rowden and Pierce Rigrod, New Hampshire DES Source Water Protection Program.
So, I'm going to get started. So, I'm going to be presenting the grant application and proposal that we've been working on with you to update the groundwater ordinances. Pierce is going to be helping me with a component of it that is new to the state model that was actually just published, so we're going to sort of tag team this, but I'm going to be sort of taking the lead initially. Give me just one second to share my screen. So, I'm going to back up just for context and for anybody who's watching and for future discussions. Some of you have heard me say this, but back in 2017, 2018, 2019, Rockingham Planning Commission did an evaluation on the groundwater ordinances and drinking water protection of all of the 27 municipalities we work with. Every town got a report, we had a summary of recommendations of what all the various towns could do to increase protection of their drinking water sources. Newton is entirely reliant on groundwater for its drinking water source. You don't have a municipal system, you do have a number of public water systems. But one of the big recommendations that came out of it was to update your groundwater protection ordinance or your aquifer protection ordinance. You do already have one, which is great, there are a number of neighboring towns that don't, but it has been in existence for quite some time, and there are some additional updates that could really enhance it to increase clarity for you to administer it. To, it will increase protection of drinking water sources going forward, and that's a big part of what Pierce and I are going to talk about tonight. And also to clarify some of the language so that you can better enforce it, so that property owners can more clearly understand it, and to provide some design guidelines that are best management practices for protecting sources of drinking water today. That's kind of the big overarching background of this. DES, actually, they just released it today, but has recently updated the groundwater protection model ordinance. The state has had one for quite some time. This most recent update includes enhancements for PFAS contamination. That is a emerging contaminant, probably heard about it on the news, but it's one of those contaminants that is found everywhere. It's a lot of industrial processes, it's in a lot of, where we've had a lot of manufacturing, it's from historic resources, it has come into our drinking water, and Newton is not unique in the fact that it has had some PFAS contamination in its past, and that going forward, there is the potential to actually prevent some of those contaminations with this update. But this update is really geared toward preventing future contamination. It's not going to correct, I'll say, ills of the past. It is intended to apply to protect the drinking water of the town going forward. So, Pierce is going to talk about the model a little bit. I'm going to give the overview of what the ordinance proposal says. He's going to really get into the enhancements that have been put in because of the PFAS contamination and sort of the impetus to better protect our drinking water sources, because we are so reliant on groundwater and building pipes and protecting groundwater elsewhere gets really, really expensive and is really hard to do. So, just to orient everybody, I think, let's see if I can make this better. The board has all of these, but for anybody, I guess, watching at home, or Pierce, who might be the only person watching at home.
He appears to be the only person.
Yeah. And my intention is, should we move forward with this? You might hear me give this version of this presentation going forward, because it's good for people to understand why we're even bothering to do this. So, in Newton, you have a stratified drift aquifer. That stratified drift aquifer, and for the board, it's the first map in that map set, is indicated by blue. The darker the blue, with exception of country pond, is the stratified drift aquifer. The darker the blue, the higher the transvissimicity is, which basically means the amount of water that is contained in the ground. The blue area is the area where you're going to get the most amount of water if you were to sink a well into the ground. Well, people have wells in places that don't just have stratified drift. You can get groundwater almost anywhere in New Hampshire. We're lucky like that. You'll also see on that map a number of dots, and then a number of those dots have circles around them. Each of those dots is a public water supply. Some of those water supplies are things like restaurants, where they are serving this different people all the time, but they count as a public water supply. Some of those water supplies are things like schools and places of work that have more than 25 people. They're serving the same number of people all the time, but those people don't live there. The third kind of public water supply is a community water supply. That can be a municipal system. Newton doesn't have one of those, but you do have a number of residential wells that serve a population greater than 25 people, have connections for more than six months out of the year. These are definitions that are defined by EPA and by DES as to what constitutes a public water supply. But, for example, things like Sergeant Woods, which is a 55-plus community that has a number of wells, it services more than 25 people. That is a public water supply. The circle you'll see in sort of the southern portion of Newton, that circle around there is their wellhead protection area. That is the area around a community or public water supply that should contamination occur has a likelihood of reaching that well. The more water that is pumped, or the type of well it is, whether it's a fractured bedrock or a gravel well, or if there are a number of wells really close to each other, dictates how big that wellhead, that circle is around the well, or how small it is. Those are set by state rules, but that's the basic premise. The more you're pumping, the bigger the radius, it does come into place to the type of well. So, you have a number of those types of community water supplies. There are also community water supplies in adjacent communities. Plastow, most notably, a few in Kingston, a few from East Kingston that come down into Newton. So, when those communities are protecting those water supplies, they're protecting water supplies in their own community, but they may be protecting water supplies in Newton, and it goes both ways. So, what one community is doing can impact another, because groundwater is considered in trust by the state for the people of New Hampshire. No community owns its own groundwater. I just said a lot of words. Are there any questions? Okay. So, this is the map without the stratified drift. These are just the public water supplies. So, these are just the public water supplies with their wellhead protection areas. The reason that's important is that currently, Newton's groundwater ordinance only protects the stratified drift aquifer, that's the area in pink behind me. A big consideration, and this is, we'll get to this in the ordinance, it's fairly high up in the proposed changes, is the consideration to include the wellhead protection areas within the boundaries of your aquifer or your groundwater protection district. So, right now, you only have the areas in pink, that's map three, if you're looking at it with my board members. To move to something that would include, so some of the wellhead protection areas are already included in your groundwater protection ordinance, because they happen to fall on top of an aquifer. But for many, that is not fully the case. Some of them are completely outside of your groundwater protection district right now. Yep.
Can I ask a potentially silly question?
There are no silly questions, this is complicated.
Depending how silly it is, this is for other people to know. Why wouldn't we have a huge protection area?
There are some communities that have tried to have groundwater protection ordinances that cover the entire community. The problem with that is that it's really hard to dictate why you are having these extra levels of protection where the resource isn't specific. So, in this case, where the groundwater, we know there is groundwater or where a public water supply well is, is pulling from. You do have quite a few ordinances in Newton that either directly or indirectly protect groundwater that cover the entire town. Your wetlands ordinance does that, your stormwater regulations do that, your lot coverage limitations do that. It's a balance between protecting the resource, which is very geographically defined, and then having just a regulation that applies everywhere. We can certainly go that route. This tends to be the more palatable and defensible reason, is to have it be tied to the aquifers and/or the public water supplies that are dictated by law and are based on the hydrology.
Makes sense. I mean, I was just, specifically for a town like Newton where everyone has.
Everyone in Newton is reliant on groundwater.
Very rural and low density, so just curious.
That, that's the basic argument.
Makes sense.
And this is regulated through the ZBA?
Um, we'll, we'll get to that a little bit.
Okay.
But currently, yes, the zoning board has complete control over your aquifer protection district. If someone can't meet the regulations, they go and get a variance. That is part of the discussion we're going to talk about, though. But that, does basically, do people understand at least the geography and the physical attributes we're talking about? Because that's really important to this.
And one more question.
Yes.
If a new community, if there's a new wellhead protection, does it automatically get added?
The way this is currently drafted, if a new public water supply were to get turned on and their wellhead protection area, which is established by state law, it would automatically become part of your zoning if we expand it to wellhead protection areas. If a public water supply, or I'm going to pick on Sergeant Woods, just because I always pick on Sergeant Woods, were to suddenly connect to a water supply where the well is now closed and isn't being used anymore, then that wellhead protection area comes out of your ordinance. So, as things get turned on.
Both ways.
It expands, as they get turned off, which doesn't happen a lot, it goes away. So, the protection is dynamic to based on the public water supplies that are active public water supplies, the way this is currently drafted. All right. Now, I'm going to go through the zoning ordinance, and I will ask you to stick with me a little bit, because some of this is really tedious. But one of the things I am going to propose, and this is actually in section eight of your established zones, that's why I gave you the table of contents with this, it includes all of the drafts, is I am wanting to pull, and it dictates what your zoning districts are, how they're defined, it just indicates what all of your face zoning districts are. I've always thought it would be useful for Newton to also include in that list, and I'm on page 11, all of the overlay districts you also have, which includes your wetlands, your groundwater, your shoreland, and your floodplain development ordinances, just so that they're called out, so people know that there is something else they might have to look at. Overlay districts basically mean you have your regular zoning, and then you have your overlay district, which is based on a resource, whether it be wetlands, floodplain, groundwater, or shoreland. Those are additional requirements, they lay on top, that's why I call them overlay districts. So, that's just a housekeeping thing to list there, just for ease of administering zoning. I assume that this change, everybody's going to be okay with, because it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
All right. But the bulk of our work is actually in Article 28. That's where you'll start to see a lot more red. It's on page 14. Now, in the electronic version that you guys have of this, there are a lot of comments that come from the groundwater model ordinance that give the explanation for a lot of the changes, the citations for the state law, the federal law, the administrative rule. I'm not going to go, just because of our time tonight and Pierce's time, I'm not going to go through all of that, but if you have a question, let me know, and we will have the opportunity to go through everything in a lot more detail. I'm going to give the overview of what the ordinance says. One of the big changes I'm going to recommend, and I do this with all the towns I work with, is to change the name of the ordinance from the Aquifer Watershed Protection Ordinance to just the Groundwater Protection Ordinance. In particular, because if we may include those public water supply wellhead protection areas, you are protecting groundwater, you are not just protecting the aquifer. It makes it also a little bit more understandable for your average homeowner or property owner to be like, oh, it's groundwater, that's what I'm protecting. to be like, oh, it's groundwater. That's what I'm protecting. The next recommendation is to increase the language that's under the authority and purpose statement. That's just beefing up the legal clarity. But one of the very key things that this does is it ties the ability to protect the groundwater to the state's innovative land use controls. And one of the items it also does is it enables the planning board to issue conditional use permits. Those are permits, and you do them for a few different things within your ordinance, but those are things that are likely okay, but there might be some special parameters you want with them to enable their use to be safe, to prevent impacts. It's putting more of the authority with the planning board and actually removing it from, a good chunk of it, from the zoning board. The reason for suggesting that is that the planning board is typically more suited to deal with protecting of natural resources and particularly water resources because you're more used to dealing with them. You deal with them with any subdivision or site plan you approve. You deal with them related to stormwater, wetlands impacts. Just typically, planning boards are more suited to dealing with them. That's the reason for recommending that change. And it also keeps it more streamlined for applicants that may be coming to the board to only have to come to one.
I was going to say, clerically, it just makes it a lot easier.
Yeah, and it admittedly can save a little bit of money because of time and notice.
Right.
I'm not going to go through all of them, but we did add quite a few definitions. Just again, to increase clarity. Some of those things are gas station, what impervious means, what an impervious surface means, which is a little bit different than your stormwater regulations because when it comes to protecting groundwater, you want an impervious surface to fully prevent the ability for contaminants to get into the water. Not just to prevent, not just the prevention of rainwater or snowmelt getting into the ground. Definition of junkyard, definition of outdoor storage, definition of what PFAS is, what petroleum terminals are, what a public water system is, what a regulated substance is, what a sanitary protective radius is. That's a, basically, a very small circle around the public water supply. What pit water table is, secondary containment, what a snow dump is, what an aquifer is. I did add a little additional to what a structure is to constitute that a building is considered a structure. And then also what a wellhead protection area. That is the big circle around the wells that we were describing.
I'm assuming these definitions are pulled.
They are generally pulled from state law or administrative rule. In some cases, they have general terms that are pulled in for clarity. So district boundaries. This is the big part of the reason I was showing the map to begin with. Your current district is only based on the stratified drift and a very teeny, teeny tiny part of what is actually Amesbury's water supply, which is this little node down in here, right south of 108.
Amesbury or Merrimack?
Amesbury, Mass. The, the water supply for Amesbury Mass pulls this far in. I know that's Merrimack, but that's what's pulling it in, so.
Okay.
So that's why you have that item three, all areas within 250 feet of Neils Pond Brook, which I cannot find the name of that brook on any map that I have, but I know where it is. We did also include changing how it is described to better have it be able to be cited so that someone coming in with a site plan application can actually pull the GIS data into their application more readily than saying, "The map on the wall downstairs." Kind of what your map probably says. Questions? Folks with me?
Yeah.
I did update the appeals process for how you would dispute where a stratified drift aquifer or groundwater district is. These are some fairly tried and true boundary dispute processes I've used in a number of other towns. It just makes the process by, which you'd go forth and need a hydrogeologist, the other mapping aspects pulled in. So if someone were to really challenge that map. The district boundaries as described should be very defensible the way they're drafted, but if there was a dispute, just having that formally in there, a little clearer. All right, the next section starts to get into really the meat of what we are talking about. There are some uses that are perfectly safe to have around groundwater. There are some uses that are really, really unsafe to have around groundwater. And then there are some, if you do them correctly, pose a very limited potential risk to groundwater. So updating the use regulations and then the requirements, those specific things that you might want to have to prevent groundwater, starting with some very simple things of not changing the minimum lot size. You guys currently have that in there, that the lot sizing is the same for your general zoning. But it just calls it out because in some communities, you have to have a larger lot size in a groundwater district. In Newton, you don't. It also calls out that the maximum site coverage, so that is buildings, asphalt, parking lots that you can have on any site, still being limited to 20%. That is something that currently, if someone wanted to exceed that 20%, they'd go to the zoning board. They'd go get a variance. While the criteria the zoning board uses to determine when that is okay and when it's not, is very general. It is not specific to the groundwater ordinance, to the groundwater resource itself.
That would include driveway?
Yes. Lot coverage is any impervious surface. So roof, pavement, gravel area. So those are just general standards for the entire district. Performance standards are specific site designs that you would then pull in if you were developing a site. A big one is drainage. You guys already deal with stormwater drainage with every site you deal with that is non-residential or multifamily within your stormwater regulations. This is really just pulling in that the basic standards have to be met for those types of projects, but also all other projects. A single-family home, potentially. So what are you pulling in? This is very basic. Basically, drainage has to be consistent with your site plan and subdivision regulations. Well, single-family homes aren't subject to those. It is saying, however, that runoff has to be recharged on the site. That's a basic standard you already have. You can't flood your neighbor's property. So these are very consistent with the regulations you already have on the books. It's just pulling it into the groundwater protection. The stormwater management conditional use permit is where we start to get into industrial operations. And this is where I'm going to pause a little bit and see if Pierce wants to chime in or if he wants to wait because this is really intended to help guide some of the PFAS contamination and reduce that risk. Pierce, would you like to chime in? Or would you like me to continue on and then pipe in at the end?
No, I think you're doing a fine job, Jen. Keep going.
Pierce and I have worked together for a long time and given several presentations, so. So again, this is really guided towards preventing that PFAS contamination, doing things like having enough separation when you're having stormwater practices. That's the same as your current stormwater regulations. It's just calling in to identify that resource. The other aspect is having a spill control and contamination plan for any uses that require a conditional use permit. That is so that if you are using a substance that is potentially toxic, if they're called regulated or hazardous substances, if you were to spill one of those, gas, kerosene, antifreeze, petroleum products, what is the plan for how you will clean it up and contain it? And then what's the protocol for going forward? It's just having that plan be recorded on file with the town so that they know what the protocol is. The site has the protocol. And often, fire departments really like to have this because it gives them an idea of what substances and the flammability of those substances could be on the site. So it has sort of a couple of uses in addition to the groundwater protection.
Then the threshold, is it 1320 or?
Uh, yes. So in all of the uses that would use higher amounts of hazardous waste, so anything below five gallons wouldn't trigger the need for a spill control and response plan. If it's residential uses, doesn't trigger it. If it's like a gas tank in a vehicle, that doesn't contribute to the need any spill control and response plan. There's a lot of exceptions. It's not all toxic or regulated substances that fall into it because there are a lot of exemptions in state and federal laws for those uses. Again, I just said a lot of words. Questions?
So this would get triggered if an applicant came in front of the planning board and they were in the overlay district and they had more than the regulatory threshold for it?
It would trigger if they require planning board approval, they are in the proposed district, and the use they are proposing is, requires a conditional use permit, which typically is an industrial or commercial use that is using a regulated or hazardous substance. So there's a lot of commercial and industrial uses that may never trigger the need for this. An automotive shop would trigger the need for this. A chemical manufacturing plant would trigger the need for this. A clothing shop would not. An ice cream shop would not. So just to give some examples. A gas station would definitely trigger this.
So the likelihood of, not to say it wouldn't happen in Newton, but it's few and far between?
I can't fully say that. And actually, I'm going to, that's just because it's a good segue. One thing I do want to point out for Newton is that you have in your town a couple of areas that are already zoned for commercial and industrial uses. Some of those areas have largely not been developed. You could have uses come into there that would trigger the need for a conditional use permit. In many cases, you already restrict those uses in that district because a good chunk of your industrial, commercial zone right off of 108 is already in your district. So this is not, I don't want to say, there's not new restrictions being considered. It's just new performance standards that are being proposed. So some of the things that they would just need to document to do those uses. It's not prohibiting those uses. So it is elevated requirements, but it's not telling someone that they can't do an automotive shop. It's not saying that you can't have a gas station. It's saying you need, just need to have better standards that are honestly just matching what are considered best practices.
And just for clarification, it's a fact we're doing this right now for work. And it's all I do, so I'm not very open. So if they have a large tank of gasoline, they would have another containment system around that. So if it does leak?
Yep, so the easier way to think about that is really fuel oil, like if you were, for like heating. Or if you had a used oil tank that you, like you're an automotive shop and you put the used oil into a tank, that would require things like secondary containment. So you'd have the tank, then you would have a concrete barrier around it that if that tank were to fail, there's enough room in the tank to not only contain all of it, but also an extra 10%. You do it at 110%. And you also make sure that that has a covered roof so that if it rains, it can't rain to the point where then it's going to flood out. So it's, it's doing a lot of things that are actually sort of industry standard at this point. They're best practices for a lot of these uses that insurance can potentially even go down if they're following. Best practices. Because they're, they're generally very common sense things, like having things labeled, having them be in correct container, and making sure they don't spill. All right. I'm going to go back to this before we dive too far into the weeds, but ask questions about the weeds if you need to. Item four, getting in that regulated substances with a capacity of five gallons or more must be stored in tight containers. Facilities with regulated substances must store substances against unauthorized entry. Outdoor storage of regulated substances, so those are like petroleum products, things that potentially can leak, has to be done inside. Containers have to be clear and labeled correctly. So five through eight are really that containment aspect. Prior to any land disturbance activities, any inactive wells. So those are public water supplies. And I did a quick look, and I might confirm that with Pierce. There are no inactive wells I was able to see that are in your existing groundwater protection ordinance and the potential expanded one we're talking about. But if there were to be an inactive well that someone decides they don't want to use it anymore, just that they would have to actually decommission it according to state rules, that's basically preventing that as being a source for contamination to go down into the groundwater and acting as a direct conduit.
Just on item eight?
Yep.
Containment of which regulated substances to store must be clearly or clear. You said clear.
Sorry, clearly is the correct word. So what's in there is correct. Item 10, that blasting activities have to be done to minimize groundwater contamination. Item 11, if there were to be transfer of petroleum products for delivery trucks, that it actually be conducted over impervious surface. That's a basic best practice because if you have a spill, it's a lot easier to contain it if it's not just going onto the soil and it's going onto a paved surface. Item 12, and this gets into some of the PFAS contamination. Industrial uses having the potential to release PFAS to the environment, including related activities associated with normal cleaning or maintenance, must develop a source control plan. The source control plan will include accessible information outlined in. And that underlying document is supplemental supplemental requirements of industrial uses involving PFAS. I need to figure out the best place to put that because that would be something the town would actually have on file. And I think it might be an appendancy to the site plan regulations to be the best place for that. So that is one part of this document that I need to think a little bit more about. But that is basically someone is doing a commercial use or an industrial use that has the potential for PFAS. Well, you need to give us some more information. That's effectively what that is guiding to do. Number 13. This is a hydrogeologic study. This is something that Newton has always had the ability to require, and in some cases has required, when someone is doing an activity, typically it's been a larger development in your aquifer protection district. Hydrogeologic studies typically you have done by someone who is a qualified hydrogeologist or an engineer that is capable of doing this. What this documents, though, is when you think that you may need a hydrogeologic study, and it says a case-by-case basis because not every project requires this, what are you looking for? What's the basic information that the planning board would need to evaluate whether a proposal is going to have a negative impact on the groundwater? It also identifies that you might want to be having someone who is specialized in hydrology, is a licensed hydrogeologist by the state of New Hampshire, doing that. One caveat to this, and we can include language or not. And Pierce and I had a good discussion last week about whether or not that made sense. When you're dealing with someone that might be doing an evaluation of an industry with PFAS potential contaminants, you might need someone that is not specifically a hydrogeologist. There might be other folks that are qualified to be able to do that. We can write that in to the potential PFAS contamination aspects of this, but I wanted to leave at this point the hydrogeologic study alone because not every project is going to deal with PFAS. You could have a residential development that will have nothing to do with PFAS. So I didn't want to make it this big umbrella when it's only going to apply to a small subset.
Right, with this other entity that you're talking about who, that could overlook that too, would, so that can work in conjunction with the hydro?
Yes.
Okay.
It, it could be the same person, but it might be someone different.
Right, because with these new buildings that are going up, we have no idea what kind of businesses they're going to have coming in there. And that whole thing is over top of the aquifer.
And, and that is a good point in that this project, I will say, is for And, and that is a good point, in that this project, I will say, is for going forward. Anything that's already legally existing, none of this applies to.
Uh, really?
Um, if you, if you were to have a change of use...
Unless somebody figured out that there was something really bad happening and they could see that it was happening, right?
Um, there are other ways of remedying. If something that is currently happening that is not legal or and/or is bad, there are other ways of remedying that than this regulation. This regulation prevents future contamination.
I have one question, maybe it's not even relevant anymore. This is specific to hydrogeologic groundwater contamination, but I've only looked at this for like three minutes, so take this with a grain of salt. This is like Saint Cobain type contamination, where it was processed.
The, the basics of what is outlined for what you would look for with this hydrogeologic study, the way it is described, does not get at the level of the Saint Cobain's contamination. Having a separate evaluation for potential PFAS contamination by potentially someone else could.
Even, yeah, I'm trying to potentially capture that at the same time, where it's impairing surface waters that then negatively impact groundwater?
I'm gonna have to think about that comment a little bit.
I, it was a pretty ironic question.
It's kinda got, it's kinda got a timing of, your example is past contamination, but this...
And, and I don't think that'll happen again, because I think we've learned...
Hmm, hopefully not. And hopefully not in Newton.
Just if I could add on to Pierce's question, because it's one of our phrases that we use. If the planning board has approved a plan, and they then request an extension, in the extension language is that provided there have been no changes to zoning, which would affect the plan?
Um, there are a couple of caveats to what, there are possible scenarios where someone could get caught in that. It doesn't typically...
Well, I just wanted to make note, make note to pull that, and...
Well, at, at this point, this is just a proposal.
Yep.
You, if you vote to move it to public hearing, there could be a few scenarios where someone could get caught by outside stricter regulations when they got approved under less strict regulations, but that very rarely happens. I will say that this proposal, if someone came in and had like a change of use, and one of those uses now is prohibited or requires a conditional use permit, then they would have to come to the planning board.
Then it would trigger it, right.
Then that triggers it, because they're changing something.
Right.
And these proposed changes fit under the guise of health, safety changes, so in that way, it does catch those kinds of changes as well.
So, you think that we should add some other type of language in here that would catch any need of the hydrogeologic studies?
I think that specifically for potential PFAS contamination, we might wanna add a little bit more specificity. That might be able to come under item twelve, sort of where we're talking.
Okay.
Um, DES is also included with their new model update, or is in development of a list of potential providers that could do that kind of evaluation. It is likely to continue to grow, but it is just known entities and organizations and companies that do that type of evaluation. So, reference to that could also be included.
Yep. Great.
All right. I'm gonna go through the simple one first. Prohibited uses. These are uses that I'm just gonna label bad. You don't want them anywhere near your groundwater. But there are a couple of caveats. One of them is any onsite disposal, distribution of toxic or hazardous waste. You already prohibit that. Underground storage tanks, you prohibit. Snow dumps, you prohibit. We did add a definition of dumping of snow. That is someone trucking in snow from a different site onto a new site to let it melt. That is what we are talking about. We are not talking about someone plowing their driveway or their parking lot and having those piles of snow there. Those are, that is not a snow dump. That often catches people, so we added a definition for that. Automotive uses are currently prohibited. Car washes, repair shops, junkyards. Item five for laundry and dry cleaning, continue to be prohibited, but I had an exception added, that cleaning services can occur, provided that the cleaning of the clothes or the materials occurs off-site. So, if you have a dry cleaner, it's just a collection point, is literally just the storefront, that's fine. That doesn't pose a risk. That's like a clothing shop at that point, cause the cleaning's occurring someplace else. So, any of the toxic or hazardous substances aren't even occurring on that site. So, I included that little caveat. I don't know if there's a need for a dry cleaner in Newton or not, but...
No.
No? All right. Um, industrial uses that use contact water continue to be prohibited. The development or operation of a gas station. You generally allude that you don't want automotive uses in your groundwater, but you never have explicitly called out that you don't want a gas station. Most communities that move forward with groundwater ordinances or expanded groundwater ordinances start to prohibit gas stations. It is not something that you need to prohibit. It is just a recommendation. The tanks that are used by gas stations today are all double walled. They have all of the alarms. The general risk to groundwater from a gas station is remarkably less than it used to be. It doesn't make it zero, but we are not dealing with as much contamination. Some of you might know about MTVE, this gasoline additive contaminated a lot of water in New Hampshire. Well, a lot of those leaks were from single walled tanks. It's one of the reasons New Hampshire requires double walled tanks. But all double walled tanks had to be removed, I think as of like twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen. But I've included that as a recommendation in here. Think about it.
Can we add items to here?
You can absolutely add. Let me get through my list first. Um, so, gas stations, industrial facilities that produce PFAS, process PFAS, or facilities, facilities that use PFAS compounds, and present a risk to groundwater. That's cited as a prohibited use. And number nine is the use of flooring concentrate class B firefighting foams, because firefighting foams are a very much known PFAS conduits. So, those are the prohibited items that I have included. We, of course, can certainly add other things. Do you want me to pause at this point? Do you want me to keep going?
Keep going.
I have a recommendation.
Okay.
Of landfills not limited to soil monophils.
All right. Um, you already, in the town of Newton, don't allow solid waste landfills. There are a couple of uses that are very much known, known contamination sources that you just prohibit townwide, which kinda gets back to your question about the townwide revisions. We can specify it. I'm just, I think it's already covered for Newton, but...
Would that be inclusive of bringing in offsite material for processing and reuse?
I would have to look into that, but I'm happy to look into it and add it to the list if it's not otherwise covered.
I, I guess that's specific to like ABC asked brick, brick concrete that has been processed for, and maybe there's a quantity at some point we're concerned in maybe additional testing.
I mean, there certainly, I've had it with other communities where someone was bringing in, yeah, it was concrete from somewhere else in the state to be crushed to then be used as fill. I think it was Fremont, New Hampshire that's had that, so...
Basically, due to our proximity from Massachusetts, to Massachusetts and access to the highways, it's quite possible that somebody would find a home for mildly contaminating material to reuse in our area.
All right. I will look into, if it's, if it's agreeable to the board, I'll look into that. I think it's already covered, but if it is not, draft something to add to the prohibited list?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Permitted uses. Any use in the district, except unless it's prohibited in this district. The maintenance, repair, or existence of any non-conforming use or structure, provided there's no increase in impervious surface. Those are all existing. The one permitted use I did change a little bit was your agricultural and forestry use, which for groundwater contamination is largely related to the use of pesticides, fertilizers, and manure storage. The reference you already had is a little bit outdated, so really just changing it to following Department of Agriculture's best management practices for agriculture being the citation. It just makes it a little bit more legally defensible. It does almost nothing to the standard that you were hitting it against. Often a comment I get with groundwater ordinance updates is, oh no, suddenly agricultural uses will not be permitted, and that is not the case. This explicitly says that they are permitted. There are a few things with some high quantities of regulated substances that can apply to agriculture, but to my knowledge, you don't have any level of agriculture in Newton that would begin to qualify like that. Sweet Hill Farm over in Plastow could potentially be sized that they may fall under a similar regulation, just as an example. All right. The next part is, I hope straightforward, but more complicated than you guys have been dealing with for groundwater.
Are we still in conditional uses?
We are now in conditional uses.
Okay.
So, we just finished permitted uses, which is anything already permitted in the district, maintenance and repair of anything that's legally there, and agriculture. All permitted uses. Conditional uses are those uses that generally are okay, but there might be specific things that you want, or areas you might not want them to be in your groundwater. So, any industrial, manufacturing, or commercial use that isn't prohibited automatically requires a conditional use permit. This is how you catch changes of uses with commercial and industrial activities, by putting in this requirement. Many commercial and industrial uses will be able to get through this conditional use permit with minimal effort, because they simply aren't a real high risk to groundwater. But you're still doing your due diligence as a planning board to meet the purposes and intents of the ordinance. Storage and handling of regulated substances, a quantity exceeding fifty-five gallons or six hundred and sixty pounds dry weight, those are both state level and federal level of regulated substances, at any one time, require a conditional use permit, as long as you are preventing spills and having that spill and control plan. I do need to identify who would be the best person in town. I suspect it's the fire department, but I do need to confirm with folks in town, who would be best suited to approve that spill and control plan. Conditional uses, multifamily residential developments, only because of the size, typically residential uses are pretty straightforward going through for protecting of groundwater, but you may wanna also ensure that their septic design is adequate, that they're minimizing impervious surface, and where they may be recharging, recharging stormwater is appropriate to protect the groundwater.
I have a question.
Yep.
How do you, I'm just gonna go back in time a bit. How do you protect the groundwater from, say, pasture animals, manure and...
Uh, pasture animals, it's typically how you're doing the manure management. So, if you're collecting the manure...
I'll collect it, okay.
And putting it in an area, having it de-water over an impervious, an impervious surface, so it dries out.
So, it is collecting and...
Keeping, keeping it away from water bodies, keeping it away from wells.
Okay.
And there's a little bit more to it, but that's the basic premise. You can still allow your horse to relieve themselves in the pasture.
But I don't know, I've heard, like if somebody, you know, had, was having a, where a couple dozen had, had a little something...
Yeah, it's, it's the manure management aspect of it.
You gotta clean it, okay.
Yep.
Yep.
Um, residential subdivisions that create more than two building lots. Some towns do this level of conditional use permits. Some people just have it be multi-residential developments, and they don't worry about the lot creation. And then finally, any excavation occurring. So, way back, when we talked about the authorization, and I mentioned the innovative land use controls at the beginning of this ordinance, and how it was giving the planning board a lot more authority, that's where this comes in. To have a conditional use permit, you need to specify when one is needed, but more specifically, you have to specify what is the criteria by which someone can get that permit. That's that next section D, just below where I was just covering. What are the criteria you want someone to address to ensure they're not gonna screw up the groundwater? That's kind of what they all end up saying. And this has to be issued by the planning board. A variance cannot be sought for these. If you are not successful in getting that permit, the only way to appeal it is to go to superior court. So, this is, I wanna say, it's a tough standard legally, but it's meant to very specifically address protecting the groundwater. It doesn't just have a criteria being, the planning board doesn't like this, so they're gonna say no. That's, that's not the intent. You have to be very deliberate, because this is very deliberate. So, the criteria are that the proposed use, so that any of those uses we just talked about, will not detrimentally affect the quality of the groundwater or drinking water resources. Kinda straightforward, but things that pose a potential risk are having to justify how all of the ways they are not posing that risk, because of how they're managing things, the design of the site, or how the use itself is operating. Item two, the proposed use will not cause significant reduction in long-term volume of water contained in the aquifer or the capacity of the aquifer. Basically, you're letting the water soak in on the site where it should be soaking in. Item three, the proposed use will not discharge wastewater other than onsite that's typically discharged to a domestic wastewater disposal system, and will not involve the onsite storage or disposal of toxic or hazardous waste. Basically, you're using your septic system properly. You're not disposing of toxic waste. Industrial uses, so this would only apply to industrial uses, that have the potential to release PFAS, require the planning board to find that the proposed use or activity adequately has source controls that effectively limit the release of PFAS substances and present no significant risk to public health, groundwater, and drinking water resources and the environment. Kind of a powerful statement, applies to only a limited amount of uses that would come through, that would be potentially proposed in your groundwater district. Item five, the proposed use complies with all other applicable sections of this article. Basically, you're following the rest of the zoning requirements. Number six, the proposed use may include any reasonable conditions attached such permitted by the planning board regarding the construction and operation. So, if there are specific things you need to add as conditions, this is just calling out that you have the ability to do that. You already have it out, but it's a nice phrase that had been there, so people aren't surprised. Item seven, we've started putting this into a lot of the natural resource-based conditional use permits my office works on. You by no means have to have it, but it is nice in that it ties the conservation commission advisory opinion in with your decision. It acknowledges that you're gonna seek their opinion and consider it. It doesn't give them any special power, doesn't give them any authority they don't already have, doesn't change the authority the planning board would have. It just gives it a little more oomph and can help with decision-making, should you have a legal challenge, because it's not just the planning board. If you have the conservation commission say, this is fine, and the planning board says this is fine, that's pretty powerful. If you have the planning board say, I'm sorry, the conservation commission say, we have concerns about X, Y, and Z, that gives the planning board more ability to say, we also have concerns about X, Y, and Z. How can you address them? Um...
And that's regardless if they're impacting the property or, and it's just...
This is strictly for groundwater. You could have the same kind of regulation in your wetlands ordinance. That just isn't what we're discussing here. Um, we are removing the special exemption that currently is in the ordinance that We are removing the special exemption that currently is in the ordinance that the zoning board has the authority over because all of the administrative capacity of this ordinance would be going to the planning board the way it is currently constructed. So that special exemption did need to come out. Non-conforming uses, this is just clarifying that any non-conforming use that legally exists now can continue to happen, and that any lot of record that existed prior to, and that March date is the town meeting date, is allowed to continue to be used and can have any use that is legally able to be on it.
Can I ask you a question?
Yep.
If a non-conforming use can continue because it was okay at the time it was approved, and then they come back to the board for a change, then can the board look at things that maybe-
Right, then they would come under the new law.
Yes. I mean, there are some things that they would pose to change that wouldn't trigger the aquifer protection district, but generally, yes. If they come to the board for any sort of an approval, then yes, they would, especially if they're expanding or changing, it would trigger this. And then going down to exemptions, that, oh, yep.
Is it possible, you had mentioned that these could have the appeal to the ZBA.
Correct.
Is it possible to put that language in the introductory paragraph?
Um, yes, it might not go explicitly in the introductory paragraph, but we can put it up towards the beginning into the appeals section.
Okay.
I have some towns that like to have that. It just can clarify to people that you can't appeal this to get a variance from the ZBA. And then going down to exemptions, this is basically just saying all of the things that would not trigger this ordinance. Residential uses are exempt from all the use regulations. Businesses and facilities where regulated substances are in smaller capacity, so under five gallons. Heating fuel is exempt. Storage of motor fuel in tanks attached to a vehicle exempt. Temporary storage related to construction is exempt. The transportation and use of pesticides are exempt from all provisions of the ordinance. Underground storage tanks that are in compliance with applicable and federal and state rules are exempt. And then administration. This is actually going down into the interpretation that this really lies with the planning board. There are some ways that variances could be asked of this ordinance, and the only way is to say, "I request a variance to not have to comply with any of the groundwater ordinance," which is why we have a small clause in here that variance request should have to be considered by the ZBA. That is the only way you can request a variance from this ordinance.
Maybe they'd have to prove a hardship?
They would have to prove a hardship. It's an unusual tactic, but I have seen it done. That's why I just bring that up. That is the only way you could request, the way this is drafted, a variance from the ordinance, is that you are requesting a complete dismissal of the entire ordinance. It would be very hard to get in most cases, but it is plausible. But I can certainly add to Jim's point that conditional use permits cannot be appealed to the ZBA. The entire ordinance, however, could.
Well, we already said earlier in this, though, the only way to appeal it is to go to the courts.
The only way to appeal the conditional use permit component of this is to go to superior court. So if the planning board denied a conditional use permit-
Right.
You only can appeal that to superior court. If someone came in and said, "I don't wanna follow any of this. I want a variance from the entire ordinance," that is the one exception they could apply to the zoning board. They could do that with any of your regulations, quite frankly. It would just be very difficult to be successful.
And they're, yeah, they were already under strict guidelines to what they would have to follow in order to give them the hardship.
Correct.
Two items.
Yep.
That might do better if instead of saying this can't be appealed to the ZBA, appeals of a conditional use permit have to go to superior court.
And the language that I can bring in effectively covers that.
Only because it has come up on a number of conditional use permits for landscaping those facilities, is the item two under exemptions.
Oh, where the regulated substances stored in containers less than five gallons? That is state rule regulations, that anything under five gallons is simply not considered a regu-, it's not that it's not a regulated substance. It's not a volume of a substance that they regulate.
And invariably, somebody from the planning board will ask, "How many can gas cans do you have? Do you have more than one five-gallon gas can, gas can? They're not exempt."
If the gas is in their vehicles, and then they have one five-gallon, then they still would be.
I think it's, it's stored in containers, plural, with the capacity of less than five gallons.
Yeah, and then the overall capacity is that 660 gallons.
Right.
I'm sorry, 660 pounds and 55 gallons total?
I just want one to double-check so that if somebody wants to come in and complain, but-
Which is, which is considerable, 'cause 660 pounds is well over a 55-gallon drum.
And that's dry weight, and then the 55-gallon drum is the liquid weight. That's the-
Right.
So either your transport tank or your truck.
That's exempt. Is the fuel tank for the truck is exempt?
No.
Well, like one of the ones in the back?
Yeah, if you have like a trailer-mounted one. I guess that's pretty far off.
I think that that would still be possible to count, but I can't 100% answer that. I can get back to you on it. I've heard that question before, and I just-
It's still a few and far between, but-
Sometimes comes up.
It's the 55-gallon, it's a lot of gasoline for the farm owners.
I mean, they're big tanks all around country, PINE. People don't wanna, you know, they wheel these huge tanks down to fill up their boats.
All right.
Those things are like 20, 25 gallons.
I know that name.
That's not commercial.
Also true. All right, that is what I have.
Would we have to, our job to develop adequate source controls that would affect-
No, that would, that would have to be developed by applicants. You may have your-
Well, we would have our standards, our, our plan that we institute, that we tell them they have to meet, I would assume.
I, yes and no. That's why tagging who would be the best person to review that plan. There are standards.
Who's that?
Identifying if it would be the fire chief or the building official. I need to verify that in town, but there are standards for developing spill control responsibilities.
Yeah, they're pretty standard.
Yeah.
Do you have a recommendation?
Those are like BNP's best management for spill prevention, but there's a standard. I think it's prescribed by the PTA, I think.
Actually, Pierce can probably answer that. But if you guys are okay, I'm gonna pause, and I'll talk about sort of what next steps and timeframes after Pierce is able to sort of present some of the PFAS components of this, 'cause he can talk about that in way more depth than I can. All right. Pierce, I think you should be able to share.
Yeah.
Okay.
So this is Pierce Regrod. He's with the Source Water Protection Program at DES.
Thank you, Jen. Thanks to the board for putting some time into this for tonight. I am going to share my screen. I have a short presentation, probably 20 minutes. So some of what you're gonna hear is probably gonna echo a little bit of what Jen has just run through specifically with, well, some of the things that I think are echoing in the current model that we've just published. So the mod, can you all see my screen at the moment?
Yes.
Okay, let me just see if I can hit a-
Almost there, just over right now.
Yep. Sorry, I just have to move it, 'cause it's, the button I need to get is not quite on my screen, so just one second. Okay, so you should see the full screen now. Can you all see that?
Yep.
Okay. So, you know, I'm gonna just talk for a few minutes about PFAS, and as everybody knows, this has been probably one of the biggest, if not the biggest, challenge for groundwater and for drinking water, and for a lot of other things in terms of how we deal with this, and the fact that it is widespread, ubiquitous, you know, 9,000-plus compounds that are used in all kinds of things that we use in our homes and in business. When Jen and a handful of others that, I kind of pulled in as a team to kind of look at how we update our model, which hadn't been updated since 2015, in part because of this complexity, the complexity of how to deal with this, you know, both at the state level, and our priority to kind of ensure that public health was protected, as well as how communities address this. And so this ordinance and the changes involving PFAS really focus on how a board can administer this, and some of the things you just heard have to do with the conditional use permit process, which I'll go through in a minute. So as you may, if you haven't tuned into our program and our page, we have a whole variety of efforts that we do along with municipal guidance like this. We also are involved with monitoring surface water sources for cyanobacteria. We administer rules that, some of which are connected to the groundwater protection BMPs that Jen was talking about, involving regulated substances, which is a term that comes out of E N B W Q 401, which is the state's rules for protecting groundwater that stem back to the Groundwater Protection Act from the early 90s. So what I'll just cover quickly is a little bit about PFAS contamination, which I'm sure you all know to some degree what's going on, what's been going on for the past six years. Some of the industrial uses that are, that use PFAS, those that are relatively well-defined and we know about, that are big, that have big impacts, and then others. And then I'll just talk about some of the changes, which again, that Jen mentioned as well, that have to do with issuing a conditional use permit when there's a use that either is or isn't, you know, you have to determine, is it going to be able to control, is it, does it create a potential for release that might contaminate groundwater? And if it, if it has any potential to do that, can the conditional use permit and the conditions in that permit mitigate that potential to release PFAS to ground? And then we'll hopefully have a few minutes to get your feedback and talk about this a bit more. So why did we kind of integrate this kind of process and discussion and requirements in this model? The model, again, is like, concludes language essentially that towns can, to some degree, I wouldn't say cut and paste, but use as a starting point for updating their own groundwater or adopting in full as a groundwater protection zoning district. It's an overlay district. And, you know, the intent really is to get planning boards more involved in this question. You know, the state only has DES through alteration of terrain or other programs, only sees a relatively small fraction of the amount of development that goes on at the local level. And certainly, some industrial uses may not be seen be reviewed or have a jurisdictional rule or law that DES needs to administer or to have a permit or rule that that use is subject to. So we may not see a number of land use activities that have industrial activities unless they're doing something that trips into our programming, our program rules. So the intent really for us was not to prevent industrial development. That is not what we're trying to do here, and we tried to make that clear in the document. It's really to try to reduce the expense eventually and the public health impacts that are associated with either unintentional, typically unintentional releases of PFAS through certain activities. So as y'all know, there's a lot of unknowns around PFAS. You know, there's over 9,000 compounds. They're not even really particularly chemically characterized fully. We don't really know what the toxicological outputs are, and that's the endpoints. And that's really what this NIH statement is saying, is we still have a lot to learn about this beyond the fact that, you know, short, short, short-chain PFASs tend to be less impactful than long, but we really don't know. And human studies are a long ways off. So EPA in setting the lower standards that you maybe would have really had to lean on animal studies and other, other work to kind of come up with the new standards that they have. So, you know, we know that things like those facilities that are actually producing PFAS compounds, the chemicals that are used and resold, are our main sources of PFAS contamination, as well as firefighting foams, waste facilities, including landfills, domestic and non-domestic wastewater disposal areas can be identified as reasons for PFAS contamination, certainly depending upon what you're doing in discharging through your septic system, for instance. And wastewater treatment plants, which are collectors essentially in a waste shed of discharges from all kinds of uses, domestic and non-domestic, commercial, industrial, everything. If you want to know a little bit more about the specific types of companies that are listed, the Environmental Working Group has an interesting list. It's an Excel spreadsheet that goes through companies that are using specific PFAS. I can share this presentation with Jen or you guys later.
We'll forward the presentation slides, so folks can review it later.
So, sure. And, you know, but basically, we know, you know, there's been enough done so far to have an idea of both uses and certain products and, and industries. And the second column here is in the, is in the updated model. It's Appendix I. It's from the IRTC, which is a national working group that has done a lot of work on PFAS, and this is basically a table that shows the industrial sectors that use both polymer-based and non-polymer PFAS, and how they use that material and what capacity. And so this is just a snip that's in Appendix I, which is essentially just a copy of their, of their list. And really, it's just giving, giving you a heads up, and local boards a heads up, of which, which sectors should you be kind of looking at when an application comes across your desk? You know, is it, you know, it's not gonna get you to that, a one-to-one specific, you know, "Oh, well, we have a, we have a, you know, an auto repair shop," or "We have a, you know, we have a auto parts store," or "A cleaning facility," or something like that. But it will just generally point you to a somewhat general level of what PFAS compounds are generally used for at that, in that sector. So it's not quite getting you, you know, something you can kind of run down the list and say, "Okay, this use in front of us is definitely this. Gonna be doing these things." But as Jen mentioned, and as you probably have gone, maybe you've gone on our website recently, we have a PFAS dashboard that is quite slick, actually. It shows all of the 12,000 or so sample points and well points that we've monitored. And, you know, there are some here. Most of them look pretty good. You know, we have a couple, you have a couple in the northeastern part of town that are, these standards are actually the state standards, but, you know, a few that are above standard, but in many places, there's quite a few more. You can see a few clustered just to the north. So that, this is a, you know, a big issue, and, you know, part of the reason why we're putting this guidance in is every day, you know, when new development hits the ground, what is, what is the discharge? That, what is, where, what is it gonna do in the future with respect to PFAS, as well as other contaminants?
Pierce, just while you have that up, the, the yellow triangle that you're seeing, that is the former Newton Town Dump.
Yeah, so some of the landfills, historical landfills are gonna be where we just threw everything, you know, and burned it probably at some point, are sitting, you know, they're gonna be historical sites we're just gonna have to deal with for a long time.
What's the red?
So, I'm sorry, if there's a question, please do. I can't see you specifically.
I was just curious what the red was.
At any point, ask a question or a comment.
Can you go back to the previous slide for just a second, Pierce?
Mm-hmm. This one?
Offhand, yes, thank you. I don't know- Offhand, yes, thank you. I don't know what the red up in Kingston is offhand.
Yeah.
That seems highly likely, yep.
Okay, sorry, I was just curious.
The hazardous waste site up in, yeah.
Oh, one twenty-five?
Yep.
They dug up the soil like a bird.
Thank you, Pierce.
So part of groundwater protection will involve, and particularly with PFAS, is gonna is going to involve discharges. So there are discharges from, you know, wastewater treatment plants. There are discharges from industrial uses. There's there are discharges from our homes. The DES has a groundwater discharge program, which is authorized under RSA forty-five, but it only deals with non domestic wastewater or domestic wastewater, so think large community septics that exceed twenty thousand gallons per day. So that's a pretty big number for, you know, so not, I I don't couldn't tell you what percentage of uh of the universe DES deals with, but that's a fairly large amount of water per day or discharge to trip into a permit permitted process. So to some degree, discharges that are lower than that or don't um are not regulated through permit process are typically a registration, which is um a pretty light requirement for most commercial or non domestic wastewater uh dischargers. They essentially uh provide some information on a piece of paper to us, and in case they are discharging, it's not really a permit. It's more just like a notification to DES that there's a groundwater discharge. And it's not saying they're not required to uh meet groundwater standards, that they there are rules that govern what water quality groundwater quality needs to be. But DES doesn't have a direct role really in oversight of of a lot of sites that are under the permitted, the permit requirements for groundwater discharge. We just, we just cannot cover that ground. So the model um guidance that that Jen has has been helping with and also starting to pull into and look at adopting in local communities with like like Newton um really need to make and have a clear distinction between um discussion about groundwater discharging and what the boards will and will not apply as rules or requirements in in with the with the idea that just like most every other thing, there's a line where the state has a permitted authority, and then there's a local authority for protecting groundwater under, say, the Groundwater Protection Act. So just I wanted to make a note there that, you know, there's there is a line here with just thinking about groundwater discharges, whether you're thinking about um any chemical. And in New Hampshire, there is there is a state authority and then there's a local authority. So the original kind of impetus for putting something uh some language and some resources and some information and template language in the new model was this idea that really we could achieve and people are achieving uh through monitoring and sort of upstream work to identify sources of PFAS, like P PFOA and PFAS PFOS uh through waste, typically in the wastewater, you know, large wastewater treatment world. You know, there are others, this is the state of Michigan, which did essentially um uh an upstream look at where sources of PFAS were coming into their wastewater uh treatment plant. And in order to reduce that, in order to meet standards uh discharge standards, they had a pretty successful, looks to me a very successful kind of effort to source identify that PFAS. And then they have rules that talk about potent minimization, which in the ones that we're looking at here largely can can uh involve uh treatment with uh granulate or uh carbon, basically activated carbon. But um so the the idea, I'm not really, I don't wanna confuse anybody by saying I'm suggesting something like this. I'm just pointing out that once you can monitor and identify and better have have a handle on what kind of PFAS may be involved, uh you'll be able to have a a conversation with applicants about what to do to minimize the release, the potential release. And as Jen mentioned earlier, I think to a question, you know, um that will be something the applicant will have to um demonstrate to you that they can, they are they are aware of any compounds that they're using, that they're producing, that they that their products have and they're processing, and that you will, they will be able to control it through a series of um through some type of um plan, source, what 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 is been referred to in the new language as as a source reduction and control plan. And so um, you know, that can be anything that has to do with things like um maintenance and uh housekeeping to taking out a particular product that might have PFAS in it and substituting in a different product that has the same function, as well as doing pre-treatment similar to what, you know, wastewater that might be coming out of um a particular industrial process, they would, they could put in treatments as well. And and explain those controls to the board uh through essentially a technical report. So really where we're headed is um, oh, before I get to that, so I think we mentioned uh Jen may have mentioned that, you know, we the key to, we've we've added industrial facilities that produce PFAS, process PFAS, or facilities that use PFAS compounds in manufacturing that present a risk of release and groundwater contamination as a prohibited use. So the key here is you're prohibiting, the language is prohibiting anything with that potential risk. So the key question is, how do you evaluate the risk? The nature and the degree of the risk and the potential for groundwater contamination. And that's going to be something that we we would expect that a third party, uh you mentioned hydrologists. It could be a a number of different specialties, um industrial engineers uh and or um source toxic toxic folks who are first in toxic uh reduction uh and um and chemical uh chemical engineering. There are a number of different areas that could come into play. But essentially, the board would have to make a decision about whether or not the risk is significant enough that it is, it is not, it it's a risk that perhaps, it's a risk to uh to the groundwater and um and is therefore prohibited. So the the it's not really a nuance, but the real question then is for those uses that have some risk, but they are controllable, you are allowed, the language we're proposing in our model is that you can approve that through a conditional use. So as Jen mentioned, conditional uses, can you conditional use permits add in an additional degree of protection for those types of uses that have some, that have that have some concerns? That's the intent is to get more, essentially more conditions to to mitigate any potential risks or issues of impact in the community. So this conditional use permit process would really only be for those uses where groundwater could be protected through some type of mitigation program, through essentially a source control or a PFAS control plan. We've included a couple of appendices that include um, you know, the industries I shared a little bit before. So you get a little bit of context of where PFAS might be find in cer- found in certain industrial uses. And then this appendix eight with A H, which I'll talk about a little bit, which is a supplemental submittal requirement. It's basically checklist, and it's a series of things we think will get uh third party consultants and the boards thinking about um those control measures in more detail and 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 leading to a technical report that um you as a board can look at and evaluate and make a decision in terms of, again, this question of, is this is this a use we can approve through a conditional use permit, or is this a use we don't believe it can be controlled and we we're gonna consider it prohibited? So things that will have to be thought about is essentially what kinds of releases are we talking about here? Are we talking about air, water, waste? How does PFAS, would PFAS be released from this particular applicant who's coming with an industrial um application, develop a proposal? Um are we confident that those controls proposed will minimize or prevent those releases? Are there suitable PFAS compound alternatives, which is possible? Um there are, there have been some great case studies showing uh changes to electroplating chemicals that you were using PFAS to alternatives that have saved money, um actually in Massachusetts. So there are some good case studies on using alternatives. And uh are they reasonable? Are these controls reasonable? Are you are you as a board asking this particular applicant to do something that's cost effective that is not gonna be considered um way outside the norm? But it's really up to the applicants to know how their controls, how they would control uh PFAS in a particular proposal. It's really only your job to evaluate whether that 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 submittal is telling you, that report, for instance, that you get will tell you that uh that convinces you that those controls are are sign- are significant and robust. So I mean, that's, this is an approach that isn't that unusual. I mean, a number of towns use a checklist sort of approach for applicants to demonstrate to you that the proposal satisfy satisfies some set of criteria. Uh and and that the, once that criteria is met, then you, the board would issue a conditional use permit, which is, you know, authorized under the planning statutes, as Jen mentioned. And so what we've put in our new guidance is essentially a checklist that I mentioned earlier. It's gonna have a series of things like, tell us all the chemicals that your industrial use will be using on site and anything that involves PFAS. We wanna know any of those compounds. Um are there substitution potential substitutions you can make? Tell us about the storage containment of these chemicals. There's more questions I didn't really um have space on this slide to go through, but there's about fifteen or twenty questions, each of which, whoops, I'm sorry, have some uh some ex- expl- uh sort of notation here uh to the right. And um, you know, a checklist, you know, did the applicant um provide this information? And uh and explanation, I suppose, and and what we envision is that this becomes the PFAS source control plan. So this is sort of almost like an outline uh for how the how an applicant's um third party engineer, third party uh specialist, qualified professional can build a report for for the board. So in the language uh under uh performance standards, so assuming you approve your conditional use permit uh in industrial use, there's language in our model that would follow on that approval where you've developed this control plan. Now it's gonna be part of a performance uh standard. So you're that plan, which is tied to your permit, to your conditional use permit, becomes part of the permit, and we think that that is an enforceable element of your permit. So if you are, if you have, for instance, if you have a control permit plan and um the town determines that that plan's not being followed, uh I I would imagine you could enforce uh non-compliance with that permit. And so there's a way for you to uh leverage compliance through through this language, particularly if you have a written plan, particularly if it's detailed enough that you can make, you can discern when those controls are in place or when they're not. So as I think Jen mentioned before, you know, we've put some references into trustees of Dartmouth College versus Hanover because um, you know, we want boards to, and like yours, which I'm sure you do, to be looking at the facts and the evidence before you and to rely heavily on the technical people who are um invariably in some degree going to be involved, probably in presenting to you uh for any kind of industrial development. And so we, you're, I'm sure all aware that, you know, boards that don't do that tend to run into legal legal problems, and this is clearly one of those where I think the technical aspects of it could be challenging for a board alone. So we did produce, um after we had some feedback from our stakeholders, uh you know, this is not necessarily gonna be the easy lift for boards. So we found, we did a um internal li- uh kind of compilation of uh consultants that different programs at DES had had listed, and we put a Survey Monkey survey together and those that had contacts, we contacted, and were able to get some response back uh from about a dozen uh consultants that we thought um would probably be able to serve uh local boards um in a way that uh we think would be supportive in 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 an applicant review uh like the one we're talking about through a conditional use permit, developing a a source PFAS source control plan. You know, but at the same time, we're not, DES cannot vouch for any company. We don't endorse these companies. Many of them are probably are likely consultants you've heard of, but we really need towns, boards, staff at the at the local level to be the one vetting the companies, just making sure what you're asking of them related to any, you know, adoption of this type of language, to be sure that they're providing you the services you need, or that they're providing the applicants the services they need to answer your questions that to the degree that that you want them to. So another aspect of this is, and this is going now, um outside of uh sort of industrial use, you know, we probably all know there's all kinds of PFAS and all kinds of things. And so as a sort of add-on, I think uh maybe not your board, perhaps the Conservation Commission could look at at a more um, you know, for a place like Newton where everybody's on a septic system. There are opportunities for you and your town to look at safer and alternative PFAS uh products that do not or that have been certified as PFAS free. I I think that, you know, our agency is beginning to stand up a program around this with the passage of a bill that bans um about a dozen different thing uh products with intentionally adding PFAS, but people, there are a number of organizations. This is EPA's uh Safer Choice Program. There's probably a half dozen more I'm familiar with. They certify products um in different ways, uh and I won't get into the details of that, but they could be pretty complicated, some of them. But uh generally speaking, most of them look at the ingredients lists provided by the manufacturers and say if you don't have one fully foreignated com- com- uh carbon molecule, if you don't have one, then you are essentially PFOS free. I I would encourage, um, you know, if the town, you know, beyond, I guess, zoning to uh to look into uh perhaps some use, some ability to promote uh some of these mainline sort of mainstream sites, again, EPA, there's, and I can provide more information if anyone has interest in that. So that is all I have for tonight for you. Uh I I did glance at at some of the zoning changes, which are good. It's I'm really encouraged that the town is and and Jen and great, you know, the RPC has been regional plan uh Regional Planning Commission Rockingham has been a great partner with us for a long time on groundwater protection, and as well as have some of the other RPCs. And um really glad to have had the opportunity to talk today about this. And I am very interested in feedback, so if any anyone has uh wants to send me an email after tonight, if there's not time, um be happy to converse with anyone. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Pierce.
Thank you.
You're welcome. If there are no further questions, I will see you at the next planning board. No, I won't see you at the next planning board meeting, but I I will, but thank you for your time.
Thanks, Pierce.
Thank you.
Take care.
Um Pierce will send me the slide deck and I'll set it around for the board to have it for the record. Um, one thing I wanna just point out, dealing with PFAS and having it be in your regulations gets really into the weeds. But you guys deal with these topics on a number of different things, stormwater, um wetlands impacts, construction impacts, where you actually have similar regulations, checklist, consultation with third party, whether it's me, town engineer, occasionally wetland scientist. Or you're bringing in those resources to help you evaluate what is admittedly a very complicated topic. I am not qualified to evaluate whether or not an industry uses PFAS, what they should do about it, but I can look at that checklist or look at those tables and be like, this is one I might wanna have more information on. You guys can do that. I mean, I can help you to do that, but it's knowing when you need to ask for more information from applicants, from third party consultants. That's the main thing to understand. But the other thing is that preventing contamination PFAS and from another number of other substances that pose a risk to drinking water, the alternative of having to clean it up or to get clean drinking water to folks is really expensive. And you're putting people's health potentially at risk, depending on the expense and the timeframe. So that's the purpose of doing it. Um, you know, we can talk about all of the subtleties and you need to di- You know, we can talk about all of the subtleties and you need to digest what Pierce said, what I've said, but that's the main idea, is that we're trying to prevent. I am also working with Sandown on a very similar effort under the same grant that I'm doing this technical assistance with you guys. They're not quite ready to have this PFOS conversation because they're a different town and the uses they allow in their town are very different than what Newton allows. They basically almost don't allow anything because no one lives there. Great town, nothing bad about it, just they're a different town. You guys do allow some of the uses that could potentially pose a risk. How do we deal with it? That's kind of the question. So that's what we're hoping that this helps to begin to address without, you know, being too hard on potential applicants, without being onerous, but it is complicated. So I fully recognize that. So you guys need to certainly digest it. But I do wanna talk about just general the timeframes that we have to talk about zoning amendments because we do have time restrictions. Effectively, if we're gonna move forward, it's the middle of October, we would have to schedule hearings for a public hearing if we get to that point for really at the latest, we have to schedule it by mid-December. You legally have to have it by the first week of January and have the notifications out, but that's cutting it too close to be honest. So really mid-December is our time we need to go. The next meeting you guys have is going to be jam-packed with applications. So while I'm happy to start answering questions and I'll make some modifications, I don't think we will have time to go through this. But the meeting after that, I would like to, as much as we can, get to as final of a draft for potential consideration at a public hearing. That's kind of in my head than a doable timeframe. You are not under any obligation to move this forward. If we decide it's too much, we can scale it back, but just realistically to, for a consideration for a March town meeting, December is our, mid-December is our end date of being able to do, moving it to public hearing. Once we move it to public hearing, you can still discuss it, we can still make modifications, doing outreach about it. But that's kind of the realistic timeline we're on.
And could you still scale it back at that point if it seems like it's overcomplicated?
Yeah, so if you were to schedule a public hearing and we have a room full of pitchforks, I'm just saying this from a recent, an example last year on a totally different topic, but we could certainly scale it back. Or if you just feel it's, it's too much and you're not quite comfortable with it, we can scale it back. You might necessitate a second public hearing. But, and at the public hearing, you can also vote to not move anything forward if you're not comfortable with it. So I do think there are some low-hanging fruit modifications that just make sense in here that aren't controversial at all, that just logistically help improve this, so I would encourage that part of it at minimum. But all of the other stuff we certainly can, we can negotiate all of it and talk about all of it, but the low-hanging fruit I'm gonna probe you forward with.
You basically have November twenty-sixth and December tenth as the two dates. Unless you want to schedule a second December meeting, because we're not on Christmas Eve. You would have to be aware of weather problems too, right?
We, we've been pretty fortunate with weather the past few years going all the way through December. But I would, I would strongly suggest what Jen said, that we put this on not the twelfth, but would be the twenty-sixth. And then take it from there and then probably schedule that public hearing. The sooner the better.
I mean, if we get to that point on November twenty-sixth, I think that's fine. If, if we really feel there's a need for other discussion, we could schedule an extra meeting if, if that would be useful, but I think that we could wait until December, I'm sorry, wait until November twenty-sixth to see where we've landed before making that decision. And I'll admit, I will not be here the day after Christmas, so.
I, well, I feel pretty, pretty secure with everything that we went over tonight with what's in here. I think it gives us a good foundation to be able to upgrade what we, what we need to do and put things in place.
I don't think anybody from the public, based on the Capitol, recent surveys we've been doing, against this. I could be wrong.
Typically with groundwater ordinances, most folks are number one priority. If you ask them what they're concerned about is the availability of having clean drinking water. Newton has had that feedback in its, all of the surveys, in its master plan, it's what some of the groups are. But there are things that can be in groundwater ordinances, but raise concern for people. It's not that they're generally against clean drinking water, but they're concerned about how that applies to their property or their business. And they're worried about what the restrictions.
And the, and the fact that, like we said, that we simply would tell them as of right now, your grandfathered with everything you're doing is fine unless you try to change use. If you try to change the, your use of the land, then that could trigger something in this.
So part of what I will do for the twenty-sixth is write up basically an introduction document that says, what is, what is the purpose of this effort? Like why are we bothering to do it? What's paying, who's paying for it? Like what, what are the implications? And then a basic fact, our questions and answers sort of section. How does this apply to my current business or property? How does this improve water protection? How does it change what my ability to do X, Y, and Z are? I'll try to get sort of, I'll say the top ten questions that I can anticipate to explain to people. What will this cost? What will the impact be? I'll get sort of the, I'll say top ten, it might be twelve questions. To anticipate the questions people will ask, to provide them the plain language answers because this is jargon to most people. I, I recognize that. But just to have it be out there, so if people have questions, maybe we're answering them before they even have to ask them. To make them feel comfortable with what's being proposed, so.
You would have to, at the end of all of this, you'd probably have to create like jurisdiction bodies, like five-partment or billing inspector or, you know, hazmat inspector or something like that to, to.
The only real thing in here specifically is the spill control and response plan, that I need to identify the right person. Everything else kind of goes through your standard, who is your third-party review? Well, Mike Fignelli would, your town engineer would certainly be part of this. If you needed a specialized hydrogeologist, chemical engineer, whatever you might need, you would use the same process. The enforcement of this ultimately is your code enforcement and select board. It's all the same process you do with every other regulation. So none of that is going to be known. It's the topic that's a little bit different and more complex than some of those other items.
Just to share, I believe this type of public hearing, all of the provisions, that it does not need to be posted in the newspaper, but it does need to be posted from on the other website, which I've, I've got that all done. So if we did on the twenty-sixth decide to take it to a public hearing, you, you could do it for the December tenth, the public hearing on December tenth. That still gives you that, the ability to hold a special meeting right after, either between Christmas and New Year's or right after New Year's, where you could have a second, if you need to have a second public hearing, you would still be able to do it.
I think on November twenty-sixth, we can weigh all of those options, but I think, you know, I'll say I'm ninety-nine percent comfortable with it on the twenty-sixth of November, moving it to public hearing, it makes sense. That is all I have for tonight. I know there's one other agenda item with the housing grant. Haven't heard anything, but everything is in, so we're, we're all set. Within sixty days is the line they gave me, so you'll know what I know.
Next, we have acceptance of the meeting minutes from October eighth.
Motion to accept the minutes.
I'll second it.
Andrew made the motion. Mr. Papo Christus.
To accept the minutes, yeah.
Ms. Whitehead will be, Mr. Ryan.
Aye.
The motions for what?
Meeting.
Oh, yes. Aye.
Mr. Givens, aye. Mr. Papo Christus.
Aye.
Mr. Eddie.
Aye.
Mr. Moran.
Aye.
Real quick, as I was walking out, Jim was saying something about it might not needing to be posted.
It doesn't need to be posted in the newspaper.
Right. But we still gotta post it via like the town website and then down in town hall?
Yep.
Okay.
And that is everything on the agenda for tonight.
You have the DPO manifest.
I know, and it's not on the agenda. Which I'm okay with. Can we wait two weeks for that?
I'm sorry, you do need to speak up.
Can we wait two weeks for the, or three weeks for the new project manifest?
It, it's, it's a real simple law.
Can we wait a few weeks? Thank you. So meeting adjourned in that hour.
Nice job, Jen.
I apologize for Pierce's very dry speaker. I didn't know that coming in.
There you are, he is.
He is, but he knows his topic.